I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Today's Wednesday, August 13th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We will start as we always do with a Nishtenon tribal recognition. I've asked Councilmember Fernandez to read that.
We acknowledge that the Nishtenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nishtenon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor on Nishtenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nishtenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people, as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you, Danielle. And I'll ask my friend Vice Mayor Sisi to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in pledging to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Lou. Madam Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sisi.
Here.
And Mayor Klein.
Here. Councilmember Peterson is absent tonight, as you may have noticed. It's time to adopt the agenda, so we'll do any agenda modifications. If there's any changes you'd like made to the agenda or to pull consent items, do we have any recusals to announce? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Vice Mayor Sisi. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It's now time for public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on the consent calendar and each agenda item at the time it is heard. Do we have any public comment on matters not on the agenda?
Come on up.
Am I the only one?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who did you call?
I didn't call anybody. You guys just...
You're welcome to form a line.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just got a question about trees overhanging city streets. Is it the city's responsibility or the property owner to trim those trees? Because they're causing problems with my trailer when I go underneath them.
So, sir, the council's unable to answer questions during this time, but they've heard, staff has heard it, and our public works director is in the back as well.
Okay, sure. All right. Just wanted to know who to contact to get the trees trimmed.
Sure.
See that gentleman right there? He'll get you right now.
He has all the answers.
All the answers.
Good evening, Mayor. Where's Mayor? And Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Myra Monarch. I am a resident of Shasta County. And I am here to respectfully ask that a caste equity resolution be added to the next meeting's agenda. Caste is a silent form of discrimination that happens among groups of people within the same origin all across the U.S. and in our own backyards. Myself and my wonderful friend Renou have been working across the North State on these resolutions. Every city that we've approached has been very receptive. Our most recent victory was in Shasta County, actually the city of Anderson. And we also have a letter of support from the Shasta County Board to the governor. So I hope that you will consider adding this item to the agenda, and I will follow up with additional information pertaining this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inspected council members and mayor, my name is Renou, and my family, and I live in the area. My husband practices, he's a physician, and he practices medicine in Grass Valley, Sierra Vista, Nevada, Sierra Nevada Hospital. I'm expressing my strong support for adding caste, as I'm one of the category that has been discriminated, being in California. Even when I try to have some domestic help, they deny to provide me any domestic help in my home because I'm caste oppressed. It is very sad. And I'm right, so if it can be added into the city's anti-discrimination laws, that will really protect us. caste-based discrimination is not a distant problem. It exists here in our own community. caste oppressed crosses industries, cultures, borders, and continues to impact people like myself in tangible, harmful ways. The statistics are sobering. One in three caste-oppressed individuals experiencing discrimination in education. Two in three face discrimination in workplace. One in two feel they must hide their identity. They even have to practice their religion like Christianity behind a closed door in closets so that they're not disclosing their identities. Adding caste protection does not create new rights. It clarifies and strengthens existing anti-discrimination laws. It sends a clear and powerful message. caste-oppressed people are seen, valued, and protected in this city. It is also important to note that caste systems are not limited to one group. It's not limited to only people from India, South Asia, Asian, African, even Latino communities have it. This makes caste a distinctive category that warrants explicit recognition and protection. It's not limited to one religion. It is spread in all the religions practiced in Asian countries. May it be Christianity, may it be Buddhism, may it be Hinduism. Passing this resolution is both a moral and a practical necessity. It is an opportunity for our city to stand firmly against all forms of systemic discrimination and to ensure that every resident, regardless of caste, can live and work with dignity and safety. I urge you to take action now and add caste as a protected category if we can discuss that today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Douglas Bianchi, and I apologize to the mayor and the city manager. I'm gonna repeat something if they've heard before. This is, I made this presentation to the Arts Council, Arts Commission. I thank you for your service in Nevada City, and I invite you to consider a city-provided platform, plinth, or pedestal at the Broad Street Y to display large works of sculpture for the enjoyment of our citizens and visitors. These pieces would be displayed seasonally, new works being unveiled on the equinoxes and the solstices, with sculptors submitting proposals to the Arts Commission. Often, the assumed permanence of large public art creates conflict in the community and puts people, such as yourselves, with good intentions and the power of choice, in the uncomfortable position of being arbiters of taste on the public dollar. In the case of a rotating exhibit, if you hate it, just wait three months. If you love it, support your local sculptor and buy it. Constructing a supporting plinth with a universal mounting system would be a modest expense to the city, particularly compared to commissioning a piece which might or might not age well. I envision works widely varying in style between four and 16 feet tall. A QR code in the base could access images of previous and proposed exhibits and a running critique of the current display. The unveilings would create four new mini-events every year, bringing sculptors, art aficionados, and other visitors to our lodgings, restaurants, bars, and galleries. I don't want to raise unreasonable expectations or set too high a bar, but I spent a formative couple of years in Florence, Italy, and as a result will forever be a fan of large sculpture. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bianchi. Any other public comment on matters not on the agenda? Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we will hear any public comment on consent calendar items only. Do we have any public comment on a consent item? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Councilmember Fleming. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none. The motion carries.
Is this just on agenda one or the entire agenda?
Thousand, the consent calendar.
All the agenda?
The, yeah.
One through seven.
One through seven. It's been passed, but I look forward to your comment.
Okay, I think we're, agenda number 12.
Nope.
One through seven.
One through seven.
One through seven?
That's what we just passed, so we'll get to 12.
I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Look forward to it.
On to business. Item number eight, consideration of one, recognition of Ann Schisko for her service to the city as a planning commissioner, and two, the appointment of Michonne Simmons as a commissioner on the Nevada City Planning Commission by Mayor Klein. That's me. Shaun, do you have anything to add before I talk words?
I will fill in whatever you miss, which will probably be nothing.
God, the confidence in me is depressing. Okay. I'm gonna read this. "I want to thank Ann for her year of service on the planning commission. Her voice has been valuable in that group, and I know they'll miss her. I gotta figure out why I keep losing planning commissioners to Grass Valley. I also want to thank Ann for pointing me towards Michonne Simmons to be her replacement." Michonne, you can come up if you want. Do you want?
No, I have to.
Does that sound terrifying?
Do I have to? Good answer.
You can come sit. There's cookies. "Like me, Michonne grew up here and is a graduate of both Seven Hills and Nevada Union. Unlike me, she has a bachelor's degree in environmental science from Dominican University of California. After a stint in beautiful Chicago, she and her wife moved home to Nevada City with their son, because when you grow up here, you tend to want that same magic for your kids. She's the business director at Forest Charter School and serves on the board of the Nevada City School of the Arts. With her background in environmental science, education, and community advocacy, I know she'll be an asset to our planning commission, and I'm delighted she's willing to serve." And now just a half hour of remarks would be fine. Shaun, what did I miss?
Totally unrelated to the planning commission, her son is the youngest entrant in the current Champ Gallery Visions of Youth installation out there. So it's on the right-hand side. As you walk out this evening, it's, all the art out there is awesome, but her son's happens to be pretty awesome, too.
Nice.
Didn't miss it, but it's a good, it's a good piece.
Thank you. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but if you want to.
Great. No, thank you. I'm excited to serve.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Brave. Praise.
Do we vote on this?
I don't think we vote. I don't think...
You don't have to. It's a receiving file item.
All right. Cool. Business item number nine, consideration of approval of the proposed Barrett-Uba Land Trust Trail Wayfinding Sign for the Deer Creek Tribute Trail System in the Nishtenon section on city-owned property, presented by our friend Don Zidonis, everybody.
Yay!
Good evening, council.
Hi, Don.
So this is pretty simple, but the Land Trust is working on a wayfinding project. They got some funding through the county. They were contracted through them. And the idea is to provide better signage that has a similar look and feel to navigate people towards recreational facilities. And so one of the signs that they would like to put up is at the end of, or near the end of Providence Mine Road, directing people to the trailhead that is past a gate that if you don't know it's there, you don't know it's there. So this would direct them down around the gate and down the road, which is city property, and get people on the Nishtenon section of the Deer Creek Tribute Trail System. And so in your packet, there was a picture of the sign and a picture of where the location would go near the gate. Once the sign is in, it would be the city's responsibility to replace it if it should get damaged or vandalized or anything like that. But otherwise, it is paid for through the wayfinding program that they are working on. So with that, I will, I think that was all. Oh, I wanted to mention, since they have the logo of the trail on the top, that was created. So you'll notice there's lots of organizations listed on this. This was a huge project to get the whole Deer Creek Tribute Trail System completed, and lots of organizations were involved. And so part of the grant requirement for that project was to have a trail forum, and it included neighbors, it included the organizations you see here, it included concerned citizens, it included Shelley from Nishtenon, and it included a member of the Chinese Quarter Society. And so through those, through that forum, someone was hired. I believe his name was David Wellner, although I don't know anything about him. And so that was the name that was given to me. And he created the logo, and so it's got the Chinese symbol on it because it's the Tribute Trail. So there's a tribute, there's a Chinese bridge out of city property, and that symbol stands for courage or bravery, so, which is what I've been told. I do not speak Chinese or read Chinese, and then the basket representing the Nishtenon. So I'll take any questions.
Before we do questions from here, any public comment on this item? Everybody likes the sign.
So your internal policy is that the council approve all signage on city property, and specifically that you approve the language, the words. Most commonly, that occurs on plaques that we're placing, the most recent being in honor of Rusty Schutz, who designed the ban shell for the, out at Pioneer Park. In this case, we're asking you to approve this for this one specific installation, but the Land Trust does have the intention of doing a trail system-wide installation of signs. And so when they come back with, how many signs did Eric say?
There's quite a few.
There's a lot of signs that'll be coming, so when that comes back, you'll have already approved the language and the appearance, but then we'll have, we'll bring it back to you to approve the specific sightings that they're going to have.
Have the concerned groups, like the Chinese Quarter Group and the Chirp, seen this design?
Oh, yeah. The logo's been in use for a long time. If you're out on the trail, most of the places where you'll see the logo are on like four-by-four posts, and they're just the small squares that are directing you. There's some, you know, going out Factory Street and at the trailheads. So it's been in use for a while.
So this, this sign's been paid for, not by us, but we've agreed to replace it if it's vandalized or torn down or anything like that. Do we know what that would cost per new sign?
I do not specifically, but typically when, if I order a metal sign that's about this size, it's around $70, although three years from now, that could be completely different.
They are made out of aluminum, so you know what that means.
You know, and I suppose there's always the option, we just don't replace them. You know, it would definitely be if we have funding at the time, if it's an issue, so.
I appreciate you talking about the stakeholders that were involved to create it and remind us of that process. I walked the Tribute Trail this morning. I love that trail. I am glad that it will be more, I, I'm glad that it will be more marked so people can have access to it. And as a local person, I feel it's such a special trail. I both want people to experience it and I want to protect it. And so I imagine we will continue to do that. Yeah, and I'm happy for more accessibility. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know that, excuse me, I know that going around that gate, most people think it's like somebody else's property, and nobody goes, and some people know, and only a few people know, and nobody uses it down there. You know, you can come from, you know, the water treatment plant area, and then people usually just double back, and they don't come up Providence Mine, but it's a nice loop. So I think this is great to, you know, provide more access, as Councilmember Fernandez said, and just to let people know that they can get there another way, you know? So, great job.
Thanks, Don. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Fleming, second by Sisi.
You're good at this.
Let's roll call.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thanks, Don.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Don.
I know. I thought I did.
Item number 10, consideration of a presentation on the process to create and implement an open space element to the Nevada City General Plan, starring Lisa McCandless, ladies and gentlemen.
Lisa?
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, good evening. So tonight, I wanted to share with you a project that we're working on, which is an update to our open space element of our general plan. It's a long-range planning document that addresses current community needs and priorities related to open space, including outdoor recreation, natural resources, and public health and safety. The update will give us an opportunity to develop new goals, policies, and implementation strategies with an action plan to ensure the city's approach to open space planning is forward-thinking, inclusive, and responsive to evolving conditions. The, there are seven mandatory elements of the general plan, which serve as a guiding framework for, the open space element serves as a guiding framework for preservation and enhancement of parks, trails, natural habitats, and other open space resources within the city. I have some community visioning work that is happening. I am expecting to post a survey by Friday of this week, and then I'd like to have that out for a month before having a community workshop. And the workshop will go over the results of the survey and also have a broad conversation about community visioning and priorities regarding open space for our local community members here, and then also have a discussion and review some draft goals and strategies that we will have developed by that time. The timeline for us to complete this work is somewhat tight. There's a bill that was passed, and it was in 2023. I just became aware of it earlier this year. SB 1425 requires cities and counties to update their open space element by the end of 2025. So we are trying to meet that goal. So you can expect to see a draft coming to the planning commission in October and then to the city council for consideration later in 2025. And keep an eye on our website. We'll be updating that and providing a link to the survey. I'll also be, I'm coming up with a stakeholder engagement list. So if you know any of your constituents that are important for the voices of open space, please reach out and let me know of that person so I can engage them. And yeah, I've been enjoying working on this and looking forward to seeing it through.
Any public comment on this?
Good evening, council, and thank you, as always, for your work. My name is Starr Carroll. I live at 124 Boulder Street. I'm the vice president of the Red Bud Chapter of the California Native Plant Society, and I'm here as a resident of Nevada City. Regarding the open space plan, I encourage you to consider something that people forget about here because of the gold rush, and as we move forward, I hope people start thinking about it more. It's our treasures, our natural treasures that are here. You may not know it, but Nevada County is a biodiversity hotspot in the entire United States. About 30% of all... About 30% of all flora, trees, and shrubs, and wildflowers, the popular wildflowers, are available in Nevada County. We have more than some entire states in this country have, right here in Nevada County. So when open space planning is being moved forward, I encourage you to consider that these are treasures, which I love Councilmember Fernandez's point of sharing them with as many as possible and protecting them, which may also include restoring them where they've been disturbed or completely eradicated. A lot of people move here and see ivy and a wealth of non-native plants that were brought here by people who didn't see any because the Gold Rush pretty much extirpated them. They were in the way of the creeks around town that were kind of ground zero for this part of the Gold Rush history. And I would encourage you to consider them. We have a great book on wildflowers and another great book on trees and shrubs that are very helpful. So, want to help, and thank you for moving this forward, and look forward to the process. Thanks.
Thanks, Starr.
Thanks, Starr.
No other public comment? Bring it back to the table. Doug?
Oh, I'm all about this. You know, I think that, you know, this is one of the parts of the general plan that, you know, I think is really fun. So I'm excited. I'd love to watch your work and see what you're doing and see how I can help.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi, Lisa. Anytime a city staff member says, "This is the first time we're updating this since the mid-'80s," I'm really happy. I was born in 1980, so, thank you for updating this. And I think that's largely, since Councilmember Peterson's not here, I'm going to take on a little bit of his role tonight and say, "I think that's largely been the role of this council, is to catch us up and to begin to look at things that were codified and never followed through with, or to catch up on other things," and all of those pieces. So I'm happy that's being done. Thank you. I'm really interested in what it means to, for this to reflect changing community values and needs. And I know I'm not even expecting you to have an answer on that. I'm just saying that I'm excited to know what that means for us since the mid-'80s. And I'm also interested, I hear you asking for individuals that we know to be potential stakeholders. I am interested in who you imagine some of the stakeholder individuals and groups are thus far. Red Bud Chapter, definitely some, a group that I'm thinking about. What else are you thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot of folks here that enjoy like the natural habitat type thing, so some of the folks that you might have seen for the old airport project, or when the Sugarloaf Trail Project was being visioned. I know a lot of the trail stakeholders in the area, but not as many of the sort of natural habitat type folks. Also, it is an opportunity for us to engage with the Native American tribes and include any sites or land that they would like us to call out as worthy of being mentioned in our open space element. Many times, cultural resources are confidential and not publicly available information, like grinding stones or burial sites. So this is sort of different, and more like if they had a ceremonial ground, or something where it was like a place where they gathered, then we would love to, you know, pay homage to that if they were open to it.
Yeah, absolutely. I know a guy who's a liaison to the tribe. Thank you so much for that. And also just putting the invite out to people in the room, and people who might be watching at home or watch this later. If you know of folks who want to be involved in this process and should be involved in this process, now's the time to let us know. Thanks.
Does this include, among the stakeholders, bicyclists and bike trails?
Uh huh. Yeah.
And would it include plans to expand the coverage and the acreage of our open space?
It will definitely speak to our goals and policies that we want to create surrounding that. So if it was a goal of the city to create new plans, then we would want to earn new trails and have that, you know, trail network expand, then we would want to write that in. Yeah.
Good, that's kind of what I'd be interested in.
Good question. Thank you. Lou?
Yeah, and it's also complementary to the work that we're going to start on either late this year or next year, for a project that we were recently notified by Caltrans that we were awarded grant funding for. So that is a active transportation, trails, and complete streets master plan. So this will come first, and then that plan, which is a master plan, will, you know, be in the works for a little while, and then hopefully other updates to other elements of the general plan as well.
I look forward to the city becoming more bike-friendly on its streets and more adventuresome in its trails.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Lisa, for your presentation. I appreciate that we've been pretty consistent with getting public input in the form of these public workshops that we have coming up, and I hope the public shows up and contributes their thoughts and concerns so that we can have a really well-rounded solution. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Me too. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
It says, "Provide any needed direction." Is this something we need to vote on, or does the city planner feel like she's received direction?
I felt great about it.
Perfect. Moving on to item number 11. Oh, this one's presented by city planner Lisa McCandless. That's exciting. Consideration of, one, the review of an initial study mitigated negative declaration, ISMND, in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA; and, two, receive public comment on the ISMND; and, three, make a finding of adequacy and direct the recording of the ISMND with the Nevada County Recorder for the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum Rail Extension Project. Lisa, you've got some gentlemen here with you.
Yes. So with us tonight, we have John Christensen of the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum.
Good job.
And his land use planning consultant, Andy Casano, from Nevada City Engineering.
Andy.
And they have, I've been working with them for quite some time now to sort of flesh out this project and understand it well enough to be able to get the SEQA clearance work done. So I'm here tonight with a request for consideration of a finding of adequacy for the ISMND, which is an initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Nevada County Narrow Gauge Rail Museum. What am I calling it?
Rail Extension.
Rail Extension Project. Thank you, Sean. So essentially, the project is proposed to join with an existing section of track on Northern Queen Inn property. There's actually a culvert there that crosses over, or that creates a crossing over Gold Run Creek, and there's rail line on that. So the proposal is to go from that location up grade, up to Railroad Avenue, and then rail line being within the right-of-way of the street. So there's a, it's sort of a unique project in the way that it's not like a conditional use permit, or a site plan, or an encroachment permit. And so that is why the IS is coming to the council for review, instead of the Planning Commission making the finding of adequacy. I did take this ISMND to the Planning Commission in July, at their July meeting. They received public comment. We had a few community members that came and spoke and talked about their concerns, and the Planning Commission asked a lot of good questions and considered the findings in the document. They did make the recommendation of approval by the City Council. And I will note that in the ISMND, I did include mitigation, and you can find that easily in the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. There is two mitigation, three mitigation measures for biology, one for noise, and two for transportation. I'm happy to answer any questions about those. And then I'd like to turn it over to Andy and John to add anything that they would like for this project.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. We always appreciate your time very much. I think that you're probably pretty familiar with what this entails. The Railroad Museum would be able to steam up the locomotive and other rolling stock and bring it out for the public to see a few times each year on holidays and certain weekends. So it's a pretty cool project. I feel like I'm here tonight representing the museum, the historical society, which the museum is a division of the historical society, and also the city of Nevada City, which has been instrumental in putting this project together, and this is kind of the next phase of doing that. I feel in kind of a celebratory mood this evening over what all's been accomplished when it comes to this museum. When you think about it, I think it's one of the most outstanding partnerships between the public, the private sector, and nonprofits that I've worked on in my career. The museum, as you may know, is owned by, the building itself is owned by the city, on land that's owned by the city. The artifacts in the museum are mostly owned by the Nevada County Historical Society. The museum's run by the museum division of the historical society. The land that it's on, the museum, was donated by the Ramey family. Our access rights were donated by Hooper and Weaver Mortuary. The tracks that they're running over are by permission from the in-town campground and the owners of the Northern Queen Inn. So really been a lot of work done across the wide sector of people, and so we're excited about bringing this forward and carrying it on. I'd like to thank Mr. Grayson for his help and guidance as we went through this part of the phase, and for Lisa for her outstanding technical work on the negative declaration or initial study, which is a tough document to write. And I was especially fond of your greenhouse gas section of the document, which was fascinating.
I got help on that part.
I would think so. Anyway, John Christensen, John Christensen here by my side is a 40-year heart and soul and driver of the museum, all things museum. He's an amazing man, and I'm proud to be sitting here with him. So any questions that we can answer about the initial study, or the project itself, or any of the details of how it would work, we're prepared to answer those questions, and thank you.
Thanks so much. John, did you want to say anything?
So, just appreciate being here and being able to address the council, and the city manager, and Lisa, and thank you. And mainly here to answer any questions you may have, and I'll answer those to the best of my ability.
Thanks, John. Do we have any public comments on this? Any questions that the public might have? Really? It's a fun project. Okay.
So just a little bit on process and how it got here, you know, this is an amazing idea in very Nevada City. There's not a lot of, we call it the Transportation Museum because the grant that they got to build it required to be called the Transportation Museum. But it was always envisioned to be the Narrow Gauge Railroad Museum, and it has been the entire time that it's been built and operated by the Historical Society. This is a great project idea that they brought forward, not without, you know, some like, "How do we make this happen? How do we make it work?" And it came through then the Infrastructure Committee, and then eventually the council to approve. It is in your CIP, and what the council agreed to do was bring it through the environmental review, as well as work to secure the easements for the in-town campground and the Northern Queen properties, which Brian has been, your city engineer, has been working on. This, it's an unusual path to do the environmental in this fashion, but it's also very common for grants that the city might apply for to require that environmental clearance has already been in place, making a shovel-ready project, so to speak. So if the city were to have an opportunity to find a grant that might assist them in accelerating the pace of this project, it would likely require this anyway. So that being said, you're not approving the project tonight. There's no final design yet or anything like that, but this is the crucial step before we can, you know, they're willing to spend some money to, you know, get a design and get it ready so that we can eventually have those trains rolling out to the kiosk instead of, I don't know if anybody's ever seen the way they put the snap track down and put the things out there at the kiosk. It's pretty amazing in and of itself, but it'd be even better if they could bring it out on a train, so.
Doug?
Oh, my turn. Great. Well, John, thank you for all your work and your dedication. I mean, you know, what you've brought to this community is just nothing short of amazing. So thank you and your team.
Thank you.
As far as the, this is probably more for Lisa, as far as the most significant mitigations for noise and traffic, what were they, was there anything substantial that we had to do here? I know there wasn't a lot.
Yeah, so there was a noise study done that informed the SEQA document, and there were recommendations in there. So one of them is regarding construction and hours of construction, and then the other one is sounding the train whistle near residences. So that's what the mitigation is, is to not sound the whistle.
At certain times.
Next to residences or right next to the Northern Queen Inn motel.
But that's, the train whistles have to...
I can expand on that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, getting up on Railroad Avenue, you know, once we're on Railroad Avenue, we really are not required to use a whistle.
Okay.
The only time, the only mandatory signals that are required is, one blast is when the engine stops, it means we're not moving. Two blasts, or toots, is moving forward, and three, we're going backwards. And there's no reason to actually do any grade-crossing whistles on that section of the track. So we feel like we can mitigate, you know, that noise. And most, and most of that would take place at the end of Railroad Avenue where the kiosk is.
Sure, sure.
Yes.
Good to know. Was there, was the other mitigation, was it traffic? Was that an issue?
Yeah, the traffic was regarding the design, so it's, "All crossing signals, signs, and safety features must be designed by a qualified traffic engineer to meet current auto and pedestrian trade grain crossing standards. California manual on uniform traffic control devices shall be referenced, and the project features for traffic exclusion should be designed and built to a level of satisfaction that meets the standards of the, of that manual and the city of Nevada City." So that is one, that's Transportation One. And then Transportation Two is access for emergency responders. So there's a requirement in there that the Railroad Museum notify Nevada City Police Department, Nevada City Fire Department, Cal Fire Station 20, Nevada County Consolidated, at least 48 hours in advance of operating steam engine on the track, so that they're, everyone's in communication about when that section of road may be closed.
Sure.
So that if there was some sort of emergency response needed.
Yes, John.
And I can expand a little bit more on that also. We have a net control station at the museum, so on-person is in charge. And so if there's any issues, anybody can be contacted. All the moving equipment, the locomotives and the rail buses all have radios, and all individuals on the ground in key positions have radios, so people can be easily contacted if something needs to be shut down or stopped, you know, like on Railroad Avenue, it can be done fairly quickly. Particularly to allow emergency vehicles to egress and ingress. Yes.
The reason I was asking is just to show what good neighbors you are, and, you know, how you're working with the community and trying to mitigate these impacts, you know, that can, you know, can happen because of this project.
And I always stress, this is a community project, so we're not here to...
Yeah.
...cause people any distress.
Let me ask another question. Is, where's the funding? Have you guys secured funding for this part of the project? I know there's a significant amount.
Well, right off the top, we can't apply for grant funds until the project, you know how that works.
Oh, yeah.
But we do have a certain amount of money. It came from the Madeline Helen Estate. But we do have a certain amount of money. It came from the Madeline Helen Estate, and I, I set a certain amount of money aside for matching grants. You know, so, and this is something Madeline was very, you know, avid, passionate about. And so, anyway, so we do have a, a certain amount of money already. And then, of course, we have the Historical Society, so.
Sure.
We, we do have money to get started.
Well, you know, I appreciate, as a grant writer, I appreciate getting CEQA out of the way. You know, everybody wants a shovel-ready project and having matching funds set aside. I mean, that's, you know, you've got two big ticket items that you've taken off the table there that usually cause people problems. So I appreciate that. What about long-term maintenance? Is there going to be a fair amount of maintenance on this, or probably?
I don't anticipate a lot of maintenance. Once, once the track, it's basically, it's a streetcar track.
Yeah.
So it'll be in the ground. And then as you build it, you will, it, it, the track will be on a cement slab and bolted, bolted down. And, and then you seal everything, you know, use a sealant, so moisture and whatnot won't get into it, you know, to, you know, to keep away any rust and whatnot. So, yeah.
So not a lot of huge, not huge.
No, I don't see a lot of maintenance. It's just mainly keeping the, the flanchways clean. And, you know, if there's any areas, you know, like concerning bicycles and this and that, those areas can be marked, you know, so people know the flanchways are there.
Nice. I, I wrote this. The, you know, the thing I like about this project is it builds on our cultural tourism asset and connects residents to our history, residents and visitors to our history. So I think it's just an amazing project. So thank you. And I'm done.
Good stuff, Doug.
Good on me.
Daniella, do you have any questions?
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for being here. John, thank you for your commitment to this portion of our local history. It's important. It's an exciting project. Doug, thank you for bringing up noise and traffic. Those were a couple of my comments. Doug, you also said, it's nice to get CEQA out of the way. And I'm sure from a development standpoint, it is. And I also just want to point out that CEQA, I think, is really important because, you know, reading through this document, it's like, there's care, right? Like, they're talking about the Cooper's Hawks, like nesting and breeding time. And so I think it's a really important thing when you say this is a community project. It is a community project, and sometimes that community expands beyond just human creatures, but other creatures that live in this space with us do and have for so, so, so long. So thank you so much for this step in the process, and I look forward to seeing how it develops. No questions.
Yeah, well, just to add to that, we are working with a local group who is concerned about the, the local fauna and biology of the meadow, the Northern Queen Inn. Basically, they've identified something like eighty-seven different species in there.
Oh, my goodness. That's a lot.
Which is a lot. And, and so, yeah, we're working with them, you know, to try to, like, preserve certain plants, you know, because we, what we do is we help the Northern Queen, they let us run through their property. And so we, every two months, go in there and mow and take the lawn down and trim trees and do what we have to do to keep the place looking tidy. And so, and, and so we are also working with this group, you know, to help preserve some of the natural flora.
Awesome. I'm glad you're thinking of our plant and animal friends, too.
We are.
Thanks, Daniella.
I think the Narrow Gage Railroad and the museum itself, including aviation details, is a gem of the city. And to some extent, it, it's a hidden gem. I think this extension is going to make it much more visible to visitors coming to the city for the first time, and that's why I'm all for it. And I was very impressed with the detail that you went into with the endangered species of flora and fauna. I learned much more about our local community than I had until I read this report. It's an excellent job.
I just have a real, just a question about when the terrain is up on Railroad Avenue and it's closed to traffic, and it makes its way to the kiosk. How long timeframe is that for the few residential folks that are there, but also offices, circles, offices there, the bank, et cetera?
I estimated the road would be closed no longer in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, once it comes off, once it comes off.
That's fantastic.
Once it comes off, onto Railroad Avenue, then, I mean, we don't go any faster than five miles an hour.
Oh, yeah.
So, but it, it won't take that, we're only going about twenty-one hundred feet, you know, to get to, to the kiosk. And then once you get to the kiosk area, that last, actually, three hundred feet is basically partitioned off, and a lot of it's, most of it's curbed. And there's sidewalks on the other side. So once the engine and the cars is pulling, gets onto that section, it's off the road. And then the road can be opened again until it's, it's ready to do the reverse trip, in which I estimate another ten minutes.
Has there been any outreach from, from your organization to those neighbors to just let them know this is likely gonna?
We had two ladies here during the, what was it? Yeah, the planning commission. And one was concerned about noise. And she was talking, complaining about, it sounded like somebody was firing off firecrackers or fireworks. But that was during our steam-up Sunday. Sometimes we have a local group here, it comes in, and they do train robberies and things like that. And so there was a
I didn't know that.
Pistol blanks, yes.
That's awesome.
So they, we have a platform, another platform in the meadow where the train can stop and the robber can get on comfortably and rob everybody. So, anyway. So, anyway, we, we explained that. And plus, they were concerned about being able to get in and out. And so I met with them that same week, and we did a walk and talk, and they were satisfied.
Great.
They wanted to know when the project was going to start. I told them, when I know, you'll know.
Yeah. And it's, this is only going to happen on special, specified days, weekends, and so forth. How, how many times are you?
So right now, you know, I was asked, I think, at the beginning, is it going to be something like twenty or so? And I said, I don't expect any more than twelve a year. I, we have our steam-up Sundays, and then you've got special holidays, like the anniversary of the railroad's May twentieth, and then Fourth of July, you know, and then Memorial Day, Labor, I don't know about Labor Day, but then the Constitutional Day weekend.
Yeah.
Things like that. But so, right now, I, I've stated, I don't see us doing any more than twelve if we do that right now. And if, if it, for some reason, something happens here, you know, that we're able to ramp up, then we'll, we'll sit down and have a talk about that.
Great.
Mayor Klein, I will add that I did send out a notice to all businesses and residents within three hundred feet of the rail line.
Cool. Did you hear back from any, many?
Uh, yes. We received a few written public comments, and then the two gals, plus Lori Oberholzer, that came to the planning commission meeting.
What'd Lori say?
Um, what did Lori say? I think she said.
Well, for the second time, second time in my life, she liked something.
Well, enjoy that.
Knew I asked for a reason, Andy.
Yeah, well, take the victories, right?
That's too more than me.
Let, let me say something about Lori. I worked with Lori back in eighty-six when we were trying to do something with the Railroad Avenue. And she was our planner, and her and her companion, they volunteered their time to do the preliminary EIR, you know, so it was a big deal. So.
And the city does have several projects that are independent but will be complementary of this project when it does go through. Your city engineer, Brian, is in the audience. He's secured funding for two different sidewalk projects that will impact this project. One is on Railroad Avenue on the other side of the street, and the other is Searls. And that will take it all the way, Searls, to the Sacramento Street Overcross. And also, then, when we pave the Clark Street Lot, that will connect by crosswalk across the bridge there. And then you have the sidewalk that currently terminates to nowhere. At the kiosk, will be connected to the Clark Street Lot, presumably where people could park if they wanted to be on the kiosk end of, of a steam-up day, so.
So you could camp at the in-town campground, take the train up to the kiosk, and then walk to downtown.
Yeah, absolutely. And then once the bridge is designed and we find money to build it, there'll be a pedestrian bridge from the backside of that parking lot to, across Deer Creek to the backside of Spring Street here. So, and that's all Lisa and Brian and the team making amazing things happen, so.
Fantastic. Love it. Great work all around.
Probably up and running, we'll be good to go.
Yeah. And we can extend it into town, right?
They did the streetcar.
I know, I know. There's a precedent.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Right at the middle of the street.
They do that in, you know, San Francisco and a lot of cities, you know. It's possible, right? Well, get this thing under, you know, and then we'll, we'll jump into that one.
We know Orlando.
That's smart. That's very smart.
Mr. Mayor, just to clean up procedurally, if there's anticipated a motion, the requested motion would be to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring plan would be the motion we got for.
I moved, so moved. Okay, you got it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Vice Mayor Sisi. Can we get a vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thanks, Don.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Congrats.
Lisa, Andy, John, thank you. Great work. Lon, item number twelve, consideration of, one, award of a design-build contract to Spawn Ranch Skate Parks in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay. And two, authorize the city manager to execute any contracts or related documents for the Nevada City Skate Park Project. This will be presented by our Assistant City Manager, Lon Peterson.
No, she, she said she's listening.
She can hear you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm excited to be here presenting this item for the skate park to move this project forward. Wanted to throw out a couple key highlights on this project. June twenty-three, the city received Prop sixty-four grant award in amount of three million over five years, which runs through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. After Chris Anderson offered to donate the land at the Nevada City Tech Center for a city-owned skate park, council approved the use of those grant funds, grant funds for the skate park. The city published an RFPQ for the skate park project. We put that out on June second, twenty-twenty-five. That captured the project's scope, community engagement expectations, technical requirements for the project. We received three project proposals in response to that RFPQ, and the city selection team narrowed it down to two semifinalist firms that came to the Community Services Committee August fifth and presented on these four key components of their approach to skate park build. Those are the concept design user flow, how the skate park will basically be accommodated for skaters of all skill levels. Next one is community meeting facilitation strategies, method for engaging residents throughout the design project, or sorry, design process. Next is the feedback collection process for systems for gathering and incorporating community input. And the final one is the design translation. So how community input will be reflected in the final skate park design. Wanted to highlight a few things about this project that's a really important. One is the city intends to do extensive outreach on this project. We do that anyways, but in this, we realize the importance of it based on other things that have happened in other local communities. We want to avoid that. We've outlined a plan in this particular RFP to highlight our commitment to this effort. That plan does not mean it's extensive, and we won't do more, but it was basically, we wanted to ensure the community, both the people, neighborhoods, but also the skate park or all-wheel community, that we are going to listen to understand, and then work with the vendor to build something. Third, Spawn Ranch, which is the, the vendor we're, we're moving forward with per your approval, is expected to coordinate with the city to keep us informed throughout this entire project as we move forward. And more importantly is, again, to coordinate, coordinate with the city on that public outreach to then translate what they're hearing and what the community's expectation is into the final design. And there'll be multiple public meetings to, to make that happen. To ensure that the community stays updated from the city standpoint, we've already set up a dedicated webpage that you can go to already, and that throughout the entire process to make sure that you're involved. That's NevadaCityCA.gov/skatepark. There, there's a, a form you can fill out. In addition to that, it's my, my direct phone and email is on there. So whether somebody's watching at this meeting or whatever, any, any opportunity that you want to chat with us for any reason on this project, please reach out anytime. I encourage it. I also want to just, just, I mean, there's a lot to it without going in the entire proposal. I did want to focus tonight on very specific outreach, and this is targeting local neighbor, neighbors and the, the community that we're trying to do. Now, I realize this is a skate park. We talked a lot about it with Doug, and there's others. It's, it's a common name that's referred to, but really, this will be an all-wheels location. And so while we're calling it a skate park, it really is much more than that. And so, but we will reach out to the broader community on that, but also the local neighbors to ensure that they understand what's going on through this project and what the city is doing to try to mitigate some of those concerns. As, as such, one of the things that we've worked on since then is integrating some, the police cameras that we currently monitor stuff that will be a part of the new skate park project. So then, much like all of other parks, it'll be sunup to sundown. If there's things going on after hours, the police department will have an active opportunity to monitor that. But again, like I said before, anytime, my email's on there. Please reach out anytime. I'd love to hear from the community. Wanted to highlight a little bit about Spawn Ranch. They've been around for thirty-plus years, experienced developing municipal skate parks. Their proposal is very impressive. It is in the packet that you have tonight. They have a lot of award-winning skate parks, also a lot of experience gathering public feedback and translating that into community parks that also kind of translate into some of the unique local things, which I think was great. They spent a lot of time, they came out onsite for this particular project, both visiting the, the location, as well as coming to the meeting to kind of outline like their intent. They really also, one of the things I really liked about their proposals, they, and the team, was that they understand the whole all-wheel, all-age, different type and skill levels of this project, which again is important. Also having experience with grand opening of this type of event, which I think will be great for Nevada City to put this on the map. And a whole lot of other stuff, innovations and things that were all throughout this particular proposal, which kind of highlighted why Spawn Ranch was selected. And so with that, I think I'll be looking for this, this committee to, or I recommend that the skate park design bill contract be awarded to Spawn Ranch. Skate parks in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And two, to authorize the city manager to execute contracts-related documents for the Nevada City Skate Park Project. And with that, I'll take questions from you guys, or end if or Doug, because he was also a part of that as well as Gary, but Gary's not here. So however you guys want to.
Do you want to speak before public comment?
Sure, sure. It doesn't, doesn't matter. Yeah, so both, you know, both the finalists, Grind Line and Spawn Ranch, are very accomplished builders. There's, you can't go wrong with either of them. Spawn Ranch, you know, I started talking to them at our first, our, our first League of Cities. They were the only skate park that I've ever seen there. And they were there, I got their brochure, and I've been looking at them over the years. They came out, not once, they came out, met with you, but they also came out, met with Chris another time. So they've been to the site twice. They had a local soil expert because there's soil issues here, and, you know, so they had this local soil person, you know, do some analysis. They're going to have a geotech guy. I mean, I think they just went above and beyond more so than the other applicant in this process, you know. The other applicant is a little, you know, impacted by some of the other things that are going on. are going on in other jurisdictions, and I think they were a little, you know, reserved a little bit in some of the things they were saying. But, you know, Spawn Ranch was clear, the best, by and for the best winner. And with regard to all wheels, you know, we've heard from people who are roller skaters, BMXers, wheelchair folks, and we want to make sure that this is accessible to all wheels. And that's not an easy thing, you know? People say that, but there's a lot of, you know, geometry that goes into making accessible for all wheels and flow. So they had a really good thing about that. Their design elements are really, I think, superior. They have, you know, they use a colored cement that's kind of red, and it's a little unique. And I think this could be, you know, an artistic skate park in some level, you know? And I think that they really, they just really brought it home. It wasn't, for me, it wasn't close between, and I talked to Gary, and he felt pretty much the same way, that they were the clear winner for various reasons, including some of the ones I articulated. I really think we're going to do well with them. We have to, I think we need to do a little site work with Chris and stuff to deliver them a project that's easier to build a skate park on, so they won't have to spend money developing, you know? That was one of the concerns they mentioned, you know? Look, there's going to be, because it's very uneven terrain. So, anyway, clear winner in my mind. They really, you know, brought it home, showed real interest in being in our community, not just another job. So I think that's really what sealed the deal for me.
Great. Thanks for that context, Doug.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public comment on this matter? We do.
Hello. Is it on? I'm Marcy Harrison, and I live in Heilman Court in Nevada City. I am concerned that the notifications and information about the skateboard have been, the whole project has been absolutely nonexistent. I was at the first meeting, and we were asked for our contact information, and I think when somebody asks for that, they expect, we expect them to use it, and that has never happened. The one thing that came in the paper happened to come at our house at 8:30, or I got it at 8 o'clock last night. That's a little late to be coming to a meeting to find out that you're wanting permission to sign the contract. How did all this happen? How did we get to the point of needing to sign the contract with no neighborhood interaction, no one in our entire neighborhood, all around Reward Street and Heilman and that whole area that would be definitely impacted, knows anything about it, has heard anything? And have there been studies done on environmental impact inquiries, decisions on, decision-making meetings involved? No one knows about. In other words, what on earth is going on? Have there been studies, I'll just mention it, do you have absolute confirmation, and this is the one everybody I talked to today, absolute confirmation that Reward Street will not be used? We were told that on the first meeting, and then out, the one and only picture that came up of the area was of Reward Street. Imagine that. So we need to be involved and have access to the skate park information. What's been done environmentally, like traffic noise, pollution of any kind? Are they taking care of the fact that that land is native land, or has been native land and mining land? And there's all kinds of artifacts. We walk it almost every day, and there's all kinds of artifacts. And have been, has there been any discovery of that, or what they need to be protecting? We are the stewards of the land, and I absolutely loved the comments made after the railroad, what do you call it, their proposition, what they were proposing, because it was, to me, it was very, very complete. The neighbors or whoever was involved were informed, they were a part of the process, and that is absolutely not what is happening here. Most skateparks are built on big, flat land, and we're proposing to put one in the middle of a forest. And how ludicrous is that, in the middle of a forest to put a skate park? Anything that's dropped or broken or smoked or anything else could impact not only our neighborhood, but the entire city of Nevada City. And that's, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment on this?
Doug Harrison, I live in Nevada City, Heilman Court, and I have just four questions that I don't think I've got reasonable input on. Have permits already been issued for tree removal and major excavations at the site? That's number one. If no permits have been issued, how can heavy equipment been brought in around the proposed site, removing trees, pulling out tree stumps, moving soil to level the property, and cutting in two dirt access roads? Is this site zoned for the skate park? I've reviewed the city zoning maps, which show that it's presently zoned light industrial. If zoning hasn't been changed, has a conditional use permit been issued, allowing for recreational use, and have all the residents in the impacted area been notified? Has a SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, been submitted? This is required if the project can have environmental impacts such as traffic, noise, and risk of fire. Has a study been done to identify any historical artifacts that may be present? I used to work for Grass Valley Group, and I'm aware of several Indian artifacts that are on the property. And that's all I have. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Do we have any more public comment on this topic? Hearing none. Lon, do you want to address any of that?
No. Can, maybe we can lead him towards some of those answers with our comments and questions?
What sort of public meetings were held prior to the consideration of these bids?
Yeah, great question. So there was meetings that were held actually before I was employed. And so, I actually have no understanding other than talking to staff about those.
I think the project itself has been at four Community Services Committee meetings, and it was at three Parks Committee meetings, the predecessor to the Community Services Committee. And we did have broad attendance at the ones that were principally agendized as skate park, both from community members interested in the location as well as from those that were interested in using the skate park. So, as things move forward, nothing has been designed yet. That is the contract that's before you. So, as Lon noted, much of the engagement still to come will center on what the design and the use of the facility will be for the end users, but also engaging the community, whether they live close or whether they live 100 miles away, engaging those that might be impacted by its siting, its use, its noise, and all of those things that you heard. And the environmental component is an ongoing portion of this before we, you know, once we have the final design and we, the land is still, it's an offer to us to secure. So, once that is parceled and/or an easement is drawn across it, and we finalize the environmental documents, that's what will be, you know, allowing us to issue permits to move forward.
Marcy, I just want to say that I hear you, and you should absolutely be included in this process. I'm sorry you haven't been. We will make that right. Lon will reach out to you.
Yeah, I think, actually, we had a meeting scheduled, and it was canceled with an open invitation to meet with anybody on Reward Street directly.
That's all right. We'll get another one on the calendar. So, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
And naming that. Doug, I'm going to let somebody else speak to the permits and zoning. That's not my expertise. But I hear that Sean, our city manager, has said that SEQA and those things are part of our process yet to come. I'm curious about, and Sean, you just touched on this, where are we with the, with a legal agreement with Mr. Anderson in terms of being able to do this and solidifying the agreement? I feel like that's like pre-zoning, pre-permits, pre-a lot of stuff.
So that will, we will finalize that at the part, at the point that we say, basically, go with the very first initial design. The reason why we haven't done it yet is because you run into the potential that the designers say, if you would have just gone 50 feet further this way, you could have avoided, you know, this kind of soils or things like that, or if you would have adjusted it this way, or if you would have considered this. Instead, they can consider that, and then we can say, yes, this is exactly the right site, or Chris, we need to move it, Chris Anderson, the owner, we need to move the, you know, the offer 50 feet this way or 100 feet this way. And then we would record the easement across the property before we would move forward with the process.
I hear that. That makes sense in the way that you framed it. It also makes me a little nervous. This is not to speak to Mr. Anderson in any way, shape, or form, or just having a plan without securing the property and that we have access to it makes me a little nervous. I'm just going to say that. And also, all wheels is exciting. I'm excited at the red clay and the red paint in ways that, design-wise, we can differentiate this project from Grass Valley, so that it can be something unique and different. But in doing so, I just want to make sure that all the neighbors feel good and are on board, and that the land is secured to do such.
Here, here.
Anything else you want to add?
You know, we're not allowed to address you directly, but I just want to point out that, and I'm sorry that everybody wasn't included, but there was a lot of neighborhood participation from Lorraine and the people on Reward Street. I don't know that we got a lot of participation from Heilman.
If I, well, if I can, I spoke to two-thirds of the people on Reward Street, and not one of them is in favor of this project. And not one of them is happy with the, and not one of them had gotten.
I'm so sorry, the public comments, done. I'm so sorry.
I can't comment?
Not right now, no. Thank you, though.
I thought I was just responding to the gentleman. Unfortunately, it's just a process thing. But this gentleman right here, Lon Peterson, will turn around and be in touch with you right after this, this item.
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we have to do a little bit more with the work on the neighbors. I mean, that's something that definitely can't be overlooked, so.
Thanks, Doug.
Hundred percent. That's why I commented in special focus area to say that we will be ongoing meetings with Reward.
Maybe just a neighborhood meeting?
Absolutely. Unique and outside of our engagement for the skate park piece to get the understanding of what the community is, that is a different need. I have been working with them. I will continue to work with the police chief for some of these concerns that we heard in the neighborhood. We've moved the location, we've added cameras. We are absolutely listening to the community and will try to address any concerns that are reasonable.
One last thing. Can I confirm that we are definitely not using Reward Street as access?
Correct.
Okay. Nobody will be able, what?
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, I mean.
Because that whole process.
Okay. We're not doing this again. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Understanding there would be never access off of Reward Street or Heilman Court.
Thank you, sir.
To the school or the property behind, and that's in the original agreement of that.
No problem.
So if you go back and look at it, you'll see.
Yeah, so that being said, even more so, City Manager Grayson and I have been looking and trying to get the Google Map reroute, so then it doesn't even show you as an access road through there, has nothing to do with the city. This is a technical piece, but it'll just, anything we can do to try to drive less traffic down there, skate park or otherwise, or school, just so we understand the impacts and we're trying to do what we can.
There's a bike park right across from their house right now as well.
Exactly. Right.
And I just want to say, as much as we're saying, oh, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this, we also need to say, and we can do better, and we will.
Agreed.
Always.
Call the access off of that school from Heilman Court.
Thank you, sir.
Lou, do you have any?
To the school?
Anything?
We need to stop back and forth with the audience, please.
I just wanted to reaffirm that this is not the end of the process. We're just kind of barely in the middle, right?
My understanding, yes. From an engagement standpoint, this is where it begins. And I'm not saying we haven't done pre-work to do to get to where we're at, but as far as like what the skate park looks like and actually the real impacts and meeting with the neighbors, this is when the planning begins with the skate park builder and the city.
Yeah, to just reinforce, when we vote on this, whichever way it goes, we don't start tomorrow.
No. I think my intent on this is to do lots of outreach and push the first meeting out far enough where there will be no miscommunication as to where there was going to be a meeting and I missed it. So I don't know when, but we'll look at this and make sure that we push that meeting out. We'll have it at the Foundry or here or somewhere very, very visible, and it won't be just one meeting, just to be clear. And again, that's the skate park meeting to get the feedback. This is a secondary one for the neighborhood that directly involves myself and chief and others.
Thank you.
So Daniela has it correct. This is, yes, we've done other stuff, but we are highlighting and committing this so much that we put an engagement plan in the RFP, which is not a common thing, just to highlight that our commitment.
And also, we do a lot of talk about how this is such a community process in terms of the design and listening to the skate community. I want us to be equally listening to folks outside the skate community that are impacted in other ways.
Fair enough.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Satisfying. So I was on the Parks and Rec Committee, and then I wasn't in about a year, so I just want to catch up on some stuff.
Sure.
It's my understanding, initially, there was a location picked out that was closer to Reward Street, and be more attached to that area, and now there is, it's at a, it's thought to be at a different location farther away from folks on Reward Street. Is that right?
Yeah, based on the, yes, that's my understanding. Based on the feedback originally received, they moved it as far away as they possibly could based on an ideal location for a skate park.
Yeah, I appreciate the efforts to involve the community, and it sounds like we can, we can do better on that as well.
Yeah.
So let's absolutely do that. I agree with Daniela that I feel skittish with awarding contracts when we don't have the land in the city's possession just yet. I understand Sean's reasoning for that. But, yeah, that part does make it feel a little more delicate. And I appreciate the effort that went into selecting Spawn Ranch, and I went to their booth with Doug at the League of Cities.
Yeah, we did.
I was impressed, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Guys, is Spawn Ranch the name of Charles Manson's?
Yeah, spelled differently.
Spelled differently.
But, yeah.
Just asking.
Do you take comfort from that at all?
No.
No.
I have more concern.
The owner's name is John Spawn, Aaron Spawn.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where it came from.
A little piece of trivia.
Yeah.
They do have a ranch, an actual real ranch.
Ranch. So what else could you possibly call it? Great. I appreciate the work on this, and I look forward to.
Yeah. And by all means, if you hear anything in the community about any of it, please immediately direct them to me, my personal mobile phone, come into City Hall, email me anytime. Happy to get some feedback and try to solve problems over there.
Lon, do you want to take this opportunity to recite your phone number into a microphone for everybody?
Absolutely. 916-370-3150. That's my personal mobile. You can call me anytime. Might not answer at 3:00 in the morning, but.
Just got a pen out. Go for it. Perfect.
Nice.
Thanks, Lon.
Absolutely.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I moved that we approved the award of this contract to Spawn Ranch and allowed the city manager approval to execute contracts related to said project. Is it enough? Good enough?
All right.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
One second.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Fleming and a second from Vice Mayor Sisi.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And we do have a couple more things on the agenda, but please don't leave without making sure that you either have his phone number or contact information, because we absolutely do want to make contact with you.
Thanks so much, Lon.
Thank you, Lon. Nice work.
Our last. Our last business item of the evening is number 13, consideration of, one, an award of construction contract with Hanson Brothers for Miners Foundry patio improvements in an amount not to exceed $202,603. And, two, authorize a project contingency not to exceed $20,260 and authorize the city manager to execute any contract or related documents. This is presented by our city engineer, Brian McAllister, a wonderful man.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
The purpose of the Miners Foundry patio improvements project is to enhance functionality of the courthouse, I mean, the courtyard...
Different project.
Wait a second.
The courtyard area, which will be used for outdoor dining, to support the cafe, restaurant, and event operations, and just make it more of a vibrant hub for community events and cultural events. And so the, the improvement is, is hardscaping, landscaping, seat walls, and seating space, and it will include lighting and also drainage improvements. There's, there's some drainage problems on that side of the building that will be addressed with this project. And we'll also just improve access from the street with stairs and railing and make it much safer to come from Spring Street down to the patio. So, so this is, this reflects the broader goals of supporting historical preservation. The foundry is a historic building, and we want to enhance public access, public amenities, and economic vitality. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of goals being hit with this project. So we, the plans were reviewed by Planning Commission some, a little while ago, and then we made a few changes to the plan in response to Planning Commission comments, and, and then put together bid documents, because now that it's a public works project, has to be prevailing wage, and that, that makes the price go up. But it's, it's also, by law, we have to do prevailing wages at a certain level for all public works projects. And, and it's, it's local contractors that bid these type of projects. So all, all four contracts, contractors that bid were local. One, one contractor pulled out, they said they made some errors in their bid. And on smaller projects like this, we don't do a bid bond. And a bid bond would make it necessary, they would have to forfeit the bond, and it's about 3% of the contract value when they change their mind and pull out. We didn't have a bid bond on this project. So they, they contacted us after the bid and asked to withdraw their bid. So that's part of the consideration. And the low bid would be Hanson Brothers and their subcontractor doing the concrete work is Weiss Landscaping, the same contractors that worked on Upper Broad Street. So welcome. Any questions?
Great, thanks.
So just, this really is the vision of Gretchen Bond, the executive director at the time, and the board of the Miners Foundry Cultural Center nonprofit. They, they're the ones that took it through the Planning Commission and had this vision to, you know, make this space and to, and to remodel the upper area into a cafe. So we really are just, you know, honoring the council and the community's commitment as we've taken ownership and operations of the facility to, you know, use it in the vision that they had and expand its, you know, opportunities for public use opportunities, or for public use. So what Brian has done is taken that and added the stairway, the path of travel, the railings, the things that will just enhance the accessibility to that area that, there's nothing wrong with it where it was before, but now that the city has control over it, it's right next to a bus stop. Everyone has walked down that driveway to, you know, get to the foundry. It's, you know, less than ideal, so that's why we did a separate item to see what it would cost, but it's truly a necessary addition to, to what they had already designed. As far as funding goes for this, we're, we anticipate that we will have an offset of this expenditure at the end of the transition with the nonprofit and the sell the liquor license and a variety of other components. But regardless of that, what we will do is we'll take all of the expenses that come through as we go through here, and you will see them at mid-year or at next year's budget rolling into a debt services component that will be paid for exclusively by the enterprise fund of the Miners Foundry. So this is not general fund, this is not, you know, residents' tax dollars that go to this. This is something that will be to the benefit of the Miners Foundry, to the benefit of everyone, but will be paid for by the Miners Foundry in the same way that they pay to keep the lights on and the internet and that kind of thing. It's a separate operation. While it's still the city's control, it's a separate operation. So you'll see those numbers as the Miners Foundry is a program in the budget as we go through the year.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
We do.
Hello, council. Lindsey, Operations Manager of the Foundry. I just want to say it's so nice to hear this plan coming to fruition that was put in place by the previous executive director and to know that the foundry is going to be not only more accessible, but more desirable to the public. I feel like this outdoor project, you know, doing the improvements on the exterior of the building is going to bring more people to the interior. And I just want you guys to know, like, I see the vision and I appreciate all of the work that's going on behind the scenes to, to get the foundry not only restored, but flourishing. And I am curious if there is any type of, I know you guys do keep me very updated, but is there a timeline in place as to work orders and when this project may start and be completed? Thank you.
I could answer that question.
You could tell us.
Okay. We, we've got a timeframe in the contract. I think it's 40 working days, which is two months. And they won't start right away. They have to get their paperwork in order and stuff. But we, in generally, we'd like to have it done before Thanksgiving.
Nice, nice, nice. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
Just to give a little context, follow up on what Sean said. You know, the foundry had been working on this project for a number of years. And, you know, a couple of things. During COVID, we found that the, you know, that the outdoor cafe was a, was a great thing, except for that transition, you know. We've had slip and falls, we've had lawsuits from that. So this is something that really needed to be done, but the, you know, the previous administration just couldn't execute on it for various reasons, including expense. It seemed to be a lot more expensive earlier. What I love is that Brian has got it, with prevailing wage, you're, you're got it to be, and new features, you've got it to be less expensive than it was envisioned, you know, two years ago. So that's a huge win, you know, you know. So I'm really excited that, that this is happening, too. You know, it's, it's really needed, you know, and it's going to make the whole front of the place more accessible. I think there's some ideas to just change some of the stairways and that traffic flow. I mean, the, you know, the pedestrian flow in the front there, too. So this sort of fits into that. This is, you know, this is a question. Is there still a cafe being envisioned in that space indoors right off the patio? Or do we know?
That's part of your request for information, that...
Okay.
For the restaurant, bar, and cafe.
Okay, that's out there, the RFI, that's out there. Okay, good.
So that will be, that, anything that, that would go into that space at the council's direction would have non-exclusive use of this space. So in other words, if it's a coffee shop, you could go in and take your coffee and sit outside there, right? So it will serve them and the greater good of the foundry.
Fantastic. I think it's just great. So thank you, Brian. Good work.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Doug, for that commentary. Thank you, Gretchen, for the vision. I'm glad we're able to follow through. Can you explain a little more, Sean or Brian? I, I agree. I think that the, the outside is going to make the inside more appealing. It's going to draw people into the space. I'm excited for the project. Can you be a little more explicit, let's say, I mean, it, it's an easy example to say, if a coffee shop goes in, you can get your coffee and come out. If a restaurant goes in, if a, if a cafe that serves food, who is this space specifically for?
It's not specifically for anyone, so it's open for, it's a, you know, city facility, publicly owned. I hope that someday people are, you know, grabbing food at, you know, lunchtime from any of our, you know, restaurants and going and sitting there and enjoying their lunch in, you know, the shade of comfort.
It's public space.
Exactly. It's public space.
Excellent.
But it's also, you know, great for Victorian Christmas or any of these other times when maybe we don't have much of a draw to pull people down there. It's like, that's highly visible from the street to, you know, to be used by the community. Now that the community owns it, let's use as much of it as we can.
Awesome. I love that. I've always, you know, I think Robinson Plaza is a great place, and I wish more people kind of traveled down there to those tables and spent time down there. It's nice to have open spaces for folks to chill and hang out and eat and drink or read or whatever they desire. Thanks, Brian.
You're here.
Thank you.
Will the renovated plaza be ADA compliant?
Yes, it will have accessibility from the, from the, the door of that cafe or restaurant, whatever it is.
Very good. Robinson Plaza is a good example of how this space could be used. We also have a monitoring camera in Robinson Plaza. Do we plan one for this?
I haven't heard that discussed.
Yeah, the chief has a number of locations that he would like to expand the camera program to, largely along these lines, not along the concerns of Big Brother. We don't have license plate readers or facial recognition or any of those things in our cameras. You will be seeing a proposal coming up either at mid-year or in the fiscal year budget to expand that program to compatible with this, with the needs for the park and the skate park project and, and others. We've, we bring to you every six months the update on how the cameras work, and I think they've been very successful at, they don't deter crime, but they help us solve them, so to speak. The officers do a great job with that, so you can expect the chief will be bringing something forward to have camera view of that as well.
Good. I would recommend it. That's all.
Thanks, Lou. Thanks so much, Brian. Thoughtful work, as always. I'm thrilled with anything that makes that space more beautiful, accessible, and user-friendly. I picture people working at KVMR and I hear at the city, making their way down the hill and getting cozy at that place at lunchtime. That's going to be a, a great, great benefit to the city, so thank you very much. And as someone who loves the Miners Foundry, anything that strengthens it is okay in my book. Do I have a motion?
I do move that we approve this contract.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion by Vice Mayor Cece. Dean feels good about it.
We're good.
Second by Councilmember Fleming. We'll get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cece?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
We are winding down to reports and future agenda items. Sean?
As usual, Dean is showing me up by wearing the shirt that I would have loved to have found. He started with a purple blazer that was like my perfect blazer, and now he's found the perfect shirt. But per the mayor's direction at the last meeting, I now wear glasses like the rest of the council.
Hey!
He got Lasik, so he doesn't have to wear them. Next week, for those interested in, thankfully, our Fire Safety Advisory Committee or Planning Commission meeting Thursday, the 21st, is the next meeting for both of those folks. Our next city council meeting will likely have presentations on the submissions for the request for information, the RFI process for the foundry, for all things bar, restaurant, cafe. Nobody will be awarded anything at that meeting, but it'll be an opportunity for those that submitted and anybody else in the community to share their ideas there and for the council to give us direction so that we can build an RFP, so you can select someone to go into those three spaces. The painted pianos have been a hit in town. We did have two complaints, understandable, you know, noises impacts businesses or residences, and so we tried to work with those folks. But the other hundreds of phone calls and emails were very supportive.
Fantastic.
They will be going away by the end of this month. They'll go into storage, and our Public Works Commission will work in the spring to find new artists, to paint them anew and to place them out in the street, hopefully with some additional locations beyond what we did this year. Jerry Bash hosted by the city in the stead of the Miners Foundry Cultural Center was great this year. It was done by the same people that have always done it, right? The staff of the Miners Foundry, which are now city employees, as well as the volunteers that always come out of the woodwork to do it. It was successful both in ticket sales and alcohol sales. There was other Grateful Dead-related concerts in the Bay Area and Sacramento at the same time. So just a tribute to those folks that, that run that operations. Technically, we're in charge of it, but the reality is they did everything that they've always done, right, to make that an incredibly successful event. So one hiccup with t-shirts, but we'll fix it. We do have, as you heard, lots of activities going on at the foundry. You'll hear more at the next city council meeting. But if you happen to be walking by there, you might notice that we replaced a fair amount of the siding on the front of the building that was worn rotten or had water intrusion. Big thanks to our Public Works crews, as well as the, the team at the foundry. They were able to essentially color match that, too. So you don't really even notice that the stain is, you know, brand-new versus really old on the next segment. So it's not perfect, of course. Nothing's going to be perfect. But, you know, we have a lot of small and large projects going on there to bring the facility up to the vision of, of what the Miners Foundry Cultural Center had for it, as, as well as to make it, like Brian noted, that upper area has some water leaks and some other things. So just trying to work through that process, and it's great to see the community walk by and say, what are you guys doing? So then we get the opportunity to tell them, so. That is all I have for you this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Sean. How about you, buddies?
You know, the, the big thing under the Community Service Committee was the, was the skate park. And so we just covered that, obviously, pretty well, and they're still covering it out in the hallway. So I think there's going to be a lot more to that, and that's really all I have. Oh, Jerry Bash was well, you know, I've been to, you know, I've worked this thing for probably seven years. And so it was really nice to not have to work it and to see the, the team there working seamlessly. It looked like an amazing event. The sound was good. The, you know, the attendance was, everybody was having a great time. It was just really nice to see. And that was the real first test, I think, of, of the city owning the foundry to see how well they could take down the, you know, Jerry Bash and, you know, you know. I think it was just, it's a great event and a testament to the foundry team and the city's stewardship of the foundry. I think it's, it's working out so far. TBD on some things, but, you know, we're getting there, I think, so. I think that's all I have. Yeah, I could go on, but I won't.
Doug?
Yeah, hi. So I took a little bit of time off during the summer, which was really nice to do and needed. Adam and I have Community and Economic Development meeting. I know this is a little ways out. It's Monday, September 8th is our next meeting. It should be a hearty agenda. Looking forward to that coming. I, too, have really enjoyed the painted pianos. I walk into town sometimes daily, at least multiple times a week, and every time I do, there's somebody at the piano. And amazingly, like, piano players at the piano. Not like children doing chopsticks. I'm sorry for the two complaints that came in. I'm sorry for those people's experience. I've had nothing but pleasant experience. And I've been trying to, like, get a little recording, ask permission for recording, to do, hopefully do a little montage. If you have recordings, send them to me. I'd love to... to do like a larger montage. I think it's really special, and I look forward to it coming back each summer, each season, because I think it's really fantastic. I want to thank Maria Morris for her artistry and her tremendous effort of her mosaic on Argyle. Y'all, I had really only seen photos of it in patchwork, but seeing it in its entirety and completed on Monday evening for the reception that was held, it's really spectacular. It's stunning. It's beautiful. And, you know, when Sean and I were talking, and then Adam and I were talking about, you know, having a public art and creating an ordinance and creating a public arts commission, that's the kind of stuff we had in mind. Those permanent, permanent art that can, temporary too, but permanent art that can really, really change the vibe and the color and the energy of a place. And I look forward to doing that more in Seven Hills District in a variety of ways, and maybe even eventually in the historic district. We did say, by the way, that we would bring that plan back after about a year or so and decide how we wanted to adjust that arts ordinance. So just reminding folks of that. And that's all I got. Thanks, y'all.
Thanks, Daniella.
Lou?
Mostly personal comments. In about a month, I turn 75, which is kind of a milestone. But even before then, my father turns 98.
Oh, wow.
So I'll be flying out to Wisconsin to Milwaukee to wish him a happy birthday.
Oh, that's nice.
And I'm really looking forward to that. I recently participated in the U.S. Masters National Swim Meet, where I placed in the top 10 in four of my five events, including a third, an astonishing third place in the 100 Fly. And while I was there, I was, I didn't realize this, but I booked my motel in the middle of a Ukrainian enclave in Federal Way, Washington. So that's where the cookies come from. And Ukraine is very much on my mind right now, and the upcoming talks are weighing heavily on my conscience. And I'm just reminded that the, the main principles of justice are that power cannot take whatever it wants, nor withhold whatever it chooses. And that kind of principle is a founding principle of this country. And among the founding principles of our country are that those principles apply no matter who you are or where you were born. So I hope we all keep that in mind in the coming months.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks, Lou. And congratulations on your achievements in swimming.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Thanks, everyone, for a nice meeting. I, it's, it's been my first month as mayor, and I've, I've heard from a lot of folks around town at SPD and so forth, who were enthusiastic about the idea of the Year of Advanced Music Appreciation. As Sean mentioned, I attended the last Public Arts Commission meeting and excused myself for a moment to walk down the street and get a slice of pizza. And that brief walk from here to Lower Commercial Street, I passed no less than three musicians posted up at different places playing. And there was no point at which I wasn't hearing music on the walk down and on the walk back, which made me feel very good. If you have a space that could hold a musician who could perform for people, it seems like the community is open to receiving that and hearing that. So go for it. I, myself, for some reason, played a show in Placerville last Thursday night. So I can't explain it, but it happened.
What?
You know, their music appreciation was not nearly as advanced as I had hoped. But it was fun. And thanks to you all, and look forward to seeing Gary next time, too. Thank you. You guys, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm technically looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
No, please.
I moved that we adjourn.
I second.